We will call the January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, meeting of the City Council of Coldwater, Michigan to order. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic for which stands the Constitution and its laws, with the Constitution and its laws.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Rissman is absent. Councilmember Mackin, councilmember Johnson, councilmember Knott, councilmember Houts, councilmember Hazel Baker, councilmember Petsco, councilmember Beckwith, and Mayor Kramer.
I'm here. We've heard from councilwoman Richman. She's on military obligation. We'd look for a motion to excuse her. Excuse. Support. We have a motion. We have support. All in favor, please say aye. Anybody opposed? She is excused. We have a spot on our agenda now, and we have one at the end of the meeting for public comments. Anyone would like to address the council, they may do so now. Seeing none, we move to our consent agenda. These are items we consider to be routine. We'll take them in one motion unless someone in the audience or somebody up here wishes an item removed for further clarification or discussion. Tonight on our consent agenda, we've got our minutes of December sixteenth, our library advisory minutes of December second, our rec board minutes of November sixth, BPU minutes of December four, South Central Power Agency minutes of November seventh, our BPU financial reports for November, our financial reports for November, and a memo from me regarding some board appointments. Would anybody in the audience wish anything removed? Anybody up here? Motion to approve our consent agenda then. Randall, thank you.
Support.
Thank you, John. We have motion. We have support to approve our consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye. Anybody opposed? That motion carried. Number nine, bills and accounts, three hundred and eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars. Questions?
Just note, if I may, Your Honor, that some of the larger ticket items in this run include our monthly garbage contract with Republic, our seventy-five thousand dollar contribution to the school district for the aquatic center, fire and liability insurance through the Michigan Municipal League, and a drain repair that took place last month on Garfield Road.
Move to pay the bills. Depart.
Thanks, Michael. We have motion and support to pay our bills. All in favor, please say aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Number ten, city manager report. Keith.
Thank you, Your Honor, Council. Welcome back after over a month holiday recess. So just want to, first of all, recognize a couple employees on some accomplishments. The first of which is our economic development and Main Street Director, Audrey Tappadon completed a public management graduate certificate program through the University of Indiana over the past eighteen months, and so we'd like to congratulate her on that accomplishment. And then we also want to recognize Robert Hartbarger, who had a thirtieth year anniversary with the city, serving the city over thirty years this past November. So we want to thank them both for their hard work and commitment to the community. Secondly, being the beginning of the year, we do a large item pickup annual report, and so I've provided the statistics for you for that for two thousand twenty-four. Over forty-four hundred large items were picked up by Republic as a result of our contract last year. That's eight hundred and twenty-five more items than we had in two thousand twenty-three, or about a twenty-three percent increase. So it is being heavily used. And we appreciate that it's being used because that helps us keep the community clean and gives an opportunity for our residents to dispose of items at no additional expense other than their monthly garbage contract subscription. So for those that want to have items picked up, they can call our city offices, or they can even do it online through coldwater.org. Winterfest is fast approaching, just under two weeks now until Saturday, January twenty-fifth, which we'll be conducting Winterfest from ten to three P M. on that day, and that includes professional wood carvings, kids' activities, horse-drawn wagon rides, the sled dog demonstrations, and the Kiwanis cardboard sled race, and an evening concert at Tibbetts. So we just want to make people aware of that and come out and enjoy that time at Heritage Park at the Robert W. Brown Recreation Center. That will be open as well. And for more information, it's been all over, but hopefully you've been able to see it on Facebook, on the city's website. Julie's been on the radio, and so we're looking forward to another. And we actually have snow this year, so presumably it'll last for another week and a half in which we can have the sled races, which last year were only a design contest because there was no snow in which to conduct the races. Another recreation program coming up is the Daddy Daughter Dance on Saturday, February eighth. And I needed to correct a couple things. So first of which is it is open to all kids within those age ranges, from kindergarten to sixth grade within Branch County, not just Coldwater schools. And it does run from six-thirty to eight-thirty, but there's also a family dance event that's going to take place, and we'll at the next meeting, I'll have additional information on this event as well. But on Saturday, that Saturday, February eighth, from three to five, there's a family dance for mothers and sons or other combinations of kids and guardians, and then the daddy, the traditional daddy-daughter dance will take place from six-thirty to eight-thirty. You can still sign up by getting hold of our Recreation Department or going on to Rec Desk on the city's website. And then this is the last week for registrations for City Academy, Citizens Academy, and so we're making a push to seek participants in that program. And they can register also online or getting a getting ahold of us at City Hall. So there again, that's scheduled to start in February, the seven consecutive Thursday evenings from six to eight, the program would run both in February and March. And with that, that's my report for this week.
Thanks, Keith. Questions for Keith? Eighty-some large item pickup a week is pretty impressive. Amazing. Four thousand items a year. Heck of a service.
To approve the city manager's report.
You just shut up and move on.
Part that.
You're comedians. We have motion. We have support. All in favor, please say aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Michael. Number eleven, a letter from Keith Baker regarding the closure of South Hanchett Street of the Cultural Jubilee Event. Keith?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have Lisa Renshaw, who's with the Cultural Jubilee Committee, and I'll just ask Lisa to give a little bit of background on the event again, just to promote that. But this would, if approved, would authorize the closure of South Hanchett for the event, which is scheduled for Saturday, May seventeenth, and I'll let Lisa discuss the event.
Well, if you weren't at Cultural Jubilee last year, I hope that you can come this year. We had such a good time. It was perfect weather, and we had some great chances to make authentic connections. I know that one of my favorite memories that I have was of one of the Arabic shop owners and his grandson, they were out playing cornhole. And I thought that was just wonderful, that they were taking advantage of our culture while we were learning so much about theirs. We are already well underway. We have several vendors already signed up. The entertainment is getting to be firmed up, and we have lots of sponsorship. We're going to run like we did last year. We're going to have the vendors in the parking lot across from Tibbetts, and we're hoping this year to expand a little bit and have possible footso competition at the other end of that parking lot, or maybe even in Hanchett Street, depending on what's flat and is good for football, footso. It's three-on-three soccer. Soccer is such a soccer is such an international sport that brings us all together. So we're going to try to add that this year. And the entertainment is going to take place again up on the terrace of the Tibbetts, and the audience is going to be down on Hanchett Street. We borrow bleachers usually from the fairgrounds, and people can sit and enjoy the entertainment, and often it's interactive, and they can come out to bang drums or dance or whatever may be going on. Do you have questions for me?
Question? Great event. We certainly appreciate all your effort and everybody's effort. If council has no questions, we'd look for action on a resolution number twenty-five oh one.
Motion. Support.
John? We have motion. We have support. All in favor, please say aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Number twelve, a memo from Shawna regarding additional funds for library memorial scrapbook. We're going to need a motion to allow Randall to exclude himself from this vote, so if.
Motion.
Thank Jim.
Support.
Thanks, Travis. We have motion. We have support to exclude Randall from voting on this issue. All in favor, please say aye. Anybody opposed? You're out. Okay, Shawna.
Okay. So in January of two thousand twenty-four, we came before you to request two thousand dollars from the library memorial fund budget for Randall Hazel Baker to do a much-needed scrapbook for the Heritage Room at the library, which is available to the public and also is digitized. So it's also available digitally to the public, but as with almost anything, you get a quote for how much it's going to cost to do a project, and sometimes it takes more time and materials to get into the project. So it actually came out to be a total of two thousand and four hundred dollars, and there's the breakdown of exactly with Randall's time, how much he was paid per hour, and then the pictures and how we got to the two thousand and four hundred dollars. So he was already approved for the two thousand dollars. We're just requesting an additional four hundred dollars.
This is Library Advisory Board funds?
Yes, Library Advisory Board funds.
Questions for anyone?
Maybe.
Are you, Jim? Hold on.
He's writing something.
We'd look for action.
He's going to point out the error of the hundred and fifty photographs at fifteen dollars. Math.
We'd look for action on resolution twenty-five oh three.
Just we had to correct it. We have to correct it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Four hundred dollars, yeah.
There's an error on the on the math.
Hundred and fifty photographs.
Oh, I get rid of that.
About fifteen hundred dollars.
That'd be ten dollars.
Fifty.
Right.
So the ten or fifteen?
Yeah.
Is it one hundred?
Or was it supposed to be ten dollars a picture?
Ten dollars.
Yeah, that's half I had.
So are we okay, Randall, with adjusting that? Is that a typo?
Yeah, that's just a typo.
So.
The amount's correct. The amount of photographs isn't.
But was it at fifteen or ten?
Ten.
Okay, there you go.
The total amount being requested is still the twenty-four hundred. Good catch. So.
What, ten dollars?
Ten dollars instead of fifteen.
Motion to adopt resolution.
Thanks, Jimmy. We have motion. We have support to allow them to pay this. All in favor, please say aye. Anybody opposed? That is done. Thank you. Thirteen, a letter from Aaron. I know Keith's going to handle this regarding amendment to the memorandum of understanding with the Presbyterian Church. Keith?
Thank you, Your Honor. So in applying for grant funds on behalf of the First Presbyterian Church to do a study on their steeple, we are applying for eighteen thousand dollars, and in the in the administration of those funds, the city will act as the fiduciary, and to appoint a person in which to act on our behalf to administer the grant, we need to identify that person, and we're seeking your approval to identify Aaron V C on our behalf, and that would be reflected in resolution number twenty-five oh four to formally approve the memorandum memorandum of understanding between the city and First Presbyterian Church in the administration of those grant funds.
Questions?
I guess a question or comment, but I know one thing I've always noticed is that out on the highway, you can pretty much see the church steeple, and I always, whenever I see it coming off of Michigan Avenue up high, it's like, if it was a little bit brighter, it would it would really stand out because the lights go like two-thirds of the way up, and then it loses that. So I don't know in the process of somehow I've always wrapped my brain around, this came up ironically, that, you know, we can't really pay for lighting the city or anything like that, or to ask the church to do it, but it'd be nice if that would be something under consideration at some point.
Stand out.
It kind of a beacon for our town as a
Yeah.
one of our skyline, if that's what you want to call it, photos or structures. That's all.
Anybody here from? Well, actually, Lisa Renshaw is involved involved in that as well, so if you have any questions.
Is that part of it?
Actually, we are going to look at re-cladding the outside of the steeple. We have a love-hate relationship with our steeple. So the spire, while we think it's wonderful, it is beautiful, and it's like this beacon that's calling everyone to Coldwater. It also that vinyl siding that they put on in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, it tends to blow off in big storms, and we're afraid it's going to break something or someone, and so we're trying to get this grant to do some planning to figure out something that would be an appropriate time period material to be able to re-clad the steeple, and we can certainly talk to whomever we end up finding about illuminating. I didn't realize that it wasn't didn't illuminate all the way to the top.
It does. It just fades out. So when you're a mile and a half away, it doesn't look as high as it is. If you're over by the movie theater somewhere up on that side where you can see it, you'd see what I'm talking about. You see it, but it's not as prominent as it could be with proper lighting.
Talk. Obviously, light technology has changed since two thousand sixteen, so I'm guessing they could give us probably thirteen million lumens or whatever they are. We could really have it standing out there so they could see it from maybe Quincy and Bronson. So we could we can try for that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for her? If not, they're looking for.
Motion.
Adopt and approve.
Twenty-four and twenty-five oh one.
Okay, we have a motion. We have support. Scott? Okay, we have motion and support. All in favor, please say aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Thank you again.
Thank you again.
Fourteen, memo from Joe Scheid regarding a proposed inter-agency.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I was just motioning Joe up. So between Joe and the city attorney, we can talk about that.
Intergovernmental operating agreement with County of Branch for using the fire range. Joe or Amanda?
Very good. As Sheriff Blankenship was getting ready to take office, we had a couple meetings about trying to work forward in a collaborative effort. One of the things we started discussion with the range, and one of the things came up was, hey, do we still have a working agreement for M U or intergovernmental thing? Originally, when we decided to start sharing that, we were able to drag out a real kind of rough copy, and we're like, we should probably get this memorialized and make sure we're all up to the proper with the new department heads and all that type of stuff. So with the help of city attorney, we were able to kind of draft it. We sent it out to the county. They were okay with the sheriff is okay. He's going to do the same thing with the county councilors, county commissioners, and send it to theirs. And this is the first step to kind of get it approved here. It's not outside of anything that we're not already kind of doing. It's just kind of rememorializing it or making it up to date.
Amanda, anything else?
I didn't. I didn't see any financial. I'm assuming it's will kick in. You'll come ask for money if a project goes on, they need help. Otherwise, it's it looks like it was no charge to the city going forward.
Correct.
As is expressed in the agreement, it's more of a reflection that the city's not obligated, but we have periodically assisted them with in-kind services, and particularly as to lighting, I think, recently, and some other improvements to the structure itself, understanding that our wear and tear plays a role in maintenance of that building.
It's worked out great for us. I mean, we've been able to use it, and just a big reminder is when we have people using it, we have to make sure we contact nine-one-one and let everybody know in town now that there's gunshots, because that's very, everybody likes to know that.
It's not something that you maybe may have been aware of, and I just wanted to make sure that we kind of reminded you and the public of this arrangement and our agreement with the in the cooperation that we have with the Sheriff's Department in the county and how we utilize this as well.
Motion to adopt resolution twenty-five oh five and approve agreement twenty-five oh two.
For Chad. Jim and Chad, any final questions?
Where is that, Joe? I'm not familiar with that.
Down by the airport, Banky Road, kind of just past Messenger Beach. There's an old gravel pit back down there.
Stop it from the Michigan State Police Shooting Range.
Separate, yes. Separate. I said, yeah, it's separate.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Not. All in favor, please say aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Number fifteen is a letter from Keith regarding the fireworks request. We had a few meetings, or maybe last meeting. It's been a month. Keith has a detailed memo, but I'll let him. Go ahead, Keith.
So just to recap, again, back in November, we had a group from the our local Arab-American community that expressed an interest in conducting fireworks displays, whether they be public displays or whether they be the use of a personal consumer fireworks, and they presented a what do you call it? They presented a memo and a letter, and and they had circulated a petition. That's what I was looking for, the word petition. They had circulated a petition for those that were expressing interest in expanding the city's allowances for the use of fireworks, and so the council directed staff to come back with a recommendation. The staff between the Public Safety Director and the City Attorney and myself looked at that, who did some additional research and investigation and communication with those within the community, and coming back to you with a recommendation. So you back in following that meeting back in December, you received a memo from the city attorney that highlighted what the current ordinance states and what the current state law provides for, and some options as to what you couldn't couldn't do relative to their request, and the different options that would be available to you. And so upon our discussions and formulation of a recommendation, we're coming back to you with the recommendation that that, one, the state law ordinance actually provides for the public displays. So there is a process by which a group, whether it's this group or any group, could pursue a public display using using fireworks with a pyrotechnics vendor like our July Fourth fireworks. And so that's already in place. And then secondly, as to whether or not to allow the additional days in which to conduct the personal use of fireworks. We're recommending that you don't expand those days, and there's a number of reasons we have identified, including the number of complaints that we get currently, not already tying the dates in which the state allows them. Those aren't those are tied to federal holidays and nothing that's relative to religious or other other holidays or recognitions. And in looking at other communities, what they do, we did find a couple communities that have different rules as they pertain to fireworks, one of which is Hamtramck, that does make provisions for fireworks on the Eid holidays, the Muslim holidays, but that was the only one that we found. We did find one other city that didn't have any rules against the use of holiday against fireworks, but the vast majority of communities either are very similar to either what we allow or are more restrictive even, and and don't don't stray from what the state allows through the course of the existing law. So bringing that now back to you for your discussion, we do have Ms. Ahmed and representatives here to answer the questions or to make a comment to their request, but bringing it back to you with a staff recommendation that we can facilitate the public displays, but we would recommend not expanding it as far as the the personal use.
Okay. We'll see if there's any questions. If there's any questions for you. Also, memo's pretty self-explanatory.
Keith, could you summarize what the state allows in terms of the official or public, I forget which title you used that on?
For the, or you mean for the public display, the large displays?
What that tells.
So it's it's a permitting process. They would they would present, they would seek a permit through the local governing body, and they would engage with a licensed vendor to conduct a display like we do when we hire a company to perform the July Fourth fireworks.
A specific date and place.
Yeah, so they would be, they'd come to us, and we would identify, and we'd go through the same planning process that we do for ours with police and fire and safety zones and that type of thing.
Thank you.
Do we have that process in place? And, you know, I mean, how much would that cost? Because if we start pulling police and fire in overtime and blocking off sections of the city, I would imagine that's expensive. So I mean, is there a if you do this, it's X amount of dollars, or do we not have that?
We definitely have the process in place, and probably the Heritage Park would be one of the locations at which we would recommend it if somebody, whether it was for this or cultivating communities or some other special event that you may want to, that somebody may want to celebrate. So but I haven't, we haven't applied an actual
Policy.
Cost to that.
And you said that that some places were more restrictive than Coldwater. I thought, weren't we just following the state? Or do we have, we didn't make any amendments?
I might have misspoke. Yeah, you can't do less than what the state.
Correct.
Well, we could choose not to adopt an ordinance, period, in which case then all fireworks would be prohibitive, but I don't think most communities follow that. But if you adopt an ordinance, which we have, we have followed the state mandate of what you have to permit.
We have to follow state. This, that's.
Yeah, it's permissive as to whether a city can adopt an ordinance to begin with. We don't have to. But to your question about the fee, the state has a permitting process for commercial displays, as Keith was referencing, getting an actual pyrotechnic expert. We can assess a fee, but we would have to go through the process of adopting a fee. We just haven't done so.
So right now, if somebody wanted to request a presentation of fireworks so that we would have no fee in place, we would just require they use a licensed vendor and have insurance?
Yes.
But then we, I'm just concerned that we would absorb the cost of police and fire.
Yes.
Yeah. If it happens a lot, we could certainly look into that, but we haven't had that happen. But we would allow it. I think we would be very supportive of it. Done the right way. But I think Keith's recommending we don't do the individual. For everybody that loves fireworks, there's somebody that doesn't, I think, is what it comes down to. Other comments? What's your thoughts?
Besides our annual fire display, is we have any other displays that people requested over the years?
Not not while I've been here. Obviously, you see some that are that are conducted for New Year's in different communities, or if there's a, you know, Centennial or Sesquicentennial, I've seen them for those purposes, but we haven't.
Does the city have to apply for the state permit when the city doesn't?
The vendor has to be licensed.
Right. But does the city have to go through the permitting process?
We don't go through the permitting process, but they would apply through their permit with us, and there's a there's a communication between us and the state, but we're not
Required.
We're not seeking approval.
Other thoughts? We have a recommendation from staff. I guess our choices are to accept the recommendation and, you know, if their staff are there, we might be going down a rabbit hole if we start allowing multiple individual displays, but we certainly would encourage and support a large festival-type thing and be, I think, in favor of that. I think that's what Keith is saying. Amanda?
Can we run into an issue if we were to allow personal firework displays? If we allowed that, would it be a liability potentially on us if, let's say, fireworks went off, nailed a neighbor's house, set it on fire, and they turned around and wanted to sue us because we allowed that?
I don't believe so. I don't believe so because I don't think the city could be found to be directly responsible. Obviously, the person that ignites the firework would be the one directly responsible for any damage. I don't think that to be likely. But if we do open it up to other holidays, it certainly opens the door to other citizens or residents coming forth and asking for a further expansion. And once you kind of open that door to other holidays, you can't treat people differently. So you would have to kind of have a more broad analysis at that.
Yes, we'd look for a motion to either accept staff recommendation or not. Move to accept the recommendation. Okay. We have support for that?
Support.
Scott? Okay, we have a motion to accept staff recommendation to not allow the individual extra days of fireworks, but understand we would be in support of a major organized license display if that would be requested. Any final comments? Not. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Sorry, and thank you very much.
I have some comments. For Eid, we do, I've mentioned that before, it's not always in the same date. It does change dates and it does change time. So during the winter, we are you know, obviously, we're not going to be doing fireworks in the middle of the winter. So it's only during when it's summer or when the weather is good. We also, like I've said, we only requested like about hours, like two, two hours for that to be done. Obviously, whenever the display happened, we're gonna get people to do it for us. So if it takes an hour, if it takes two hours, however much it takes, we're not expecting it to be more than that. And then we'll be doing it after we break our fast. So I just wanted to clarify that. It won't take much. We will let the community know of what we guys have recommended us and we appreciate it. But yeah, any other questions for us? I just want to clarify that it does move. It's not always in the same time. The, in the past, it's been in the summer. It's been around Fourth of July, and that's how we kind of the issue came up is when Fourth of July and Eid came around the same time and people did it. And then after that, they thought that they had the right to do it every single other year or every year. So with that being said, that's why we kind of came here and wanting to ask for permission to do something. But yeah, so I want to clarify that it might not be every Eid. We might not have to do every Eid. It might just be the Eids are in the summer because Eids are more, it's coming back toward the winter with Ramadan being in March. Yeah, just want to clarify that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Finally, we have a presentation by Stephanie Burdick, our community engagement coordinator on the two thousand twenty four annual impact report. Stephanie?
Thank you, Mayor Kramer and members of the council. As he said, I'm Stephanie Burdick on the community engagement coordinator here. I have been for about the past ten months. And this is primarily a department of one. However, I did have a marketing assistant this summer and currently have an OJT student who works with me twelve hours a week. So today I'd like to do a year-end review of the department itself, as well as the impact that the BPU and the city has had on the community. Okay, so the department itself is a shared department between the city and the BPU, and the responsibilities can basically be divided into two sections. The first one is a marketing portion, and this includes the documentation, design and communication. This is everything from taking photos and doing graphics, social media, updates, content, writing the content and doing the photos for that, the website updates. And that could include forms or graphics or links or information on the different pages, the reorganization of the website. It also includes print materials, including the city calendar, the rec guides, A-frames and even stickers. The second part of the responsibilities fall into the community engagement opportunities. And this would be promotion at community events like parades and festival booths and coordinating school engagement events. So first up is documentation. This would be all the photos that you see. Someone has to take them and that someone, a lot of the times, is me. So that's everything from fire trainings like hose drills and grain bin rescue to PR opportunities like shop with a hero. It includes documenting daily life at the BPU like our water guys in the lab or the electric department doing line pole rescue trainings. Climbing up in the bucket truck to get shots of hanging Rudolph, which everybody loves. Spending a Sunday at the rec department's bass fishing tournament or braving sub-zero temps to get potential calendar photos like this cute little squirrel. All that to say, most of the photos that appear on social media or in our city calendar are because of this department. Along with documentation is design and communication. We spent the year creating thousands of graphics to inform the public. From job postings to event maps and announcements to announcing new services like the public document shredding day, to election information, community engagement opportunities like our Toys for Tots drive, to rebate announcements, scam awareness information, which cropped up again a week or so ago, to free Roku opportunities, things through the CBPU. Fourth of July announcements, including ordinance reminders and safety tips from the fire department, outage alerts and general information like this police badge that informed the public about suicide prevention month. Phew, but we're not done yet because there's also the rec department. The rec department requires a ton of graphics for all of their sports programming and special events like the Haunted Forest, Apple Fest and Strawberry Fest. And it was mentioned that Winter Fest is just around the corner too. I would love to see you all embrace your inner child and go down Kiwanis Hill in a cardboard sled if you're willing. And on that same note, for those of us who are still five-year-olds at heart, creating stickers like these are another creative piece that comes from this department. I absolutely loved making this badge for the police department to feature their new dog or making this energy-saving tip on the sticker that we attached to light bulbs we donated to the food pantry. And the monsters we actually passed out at our school visits during Public Utilities Week. We also create all the flyers, posters and A-frames for all the rec events, the rec activity guides and the city calendar. We're always designing and communicating, whether that's in print or social media or on our website. And every once in a while, we're given a quirky outside-the-box task, like this detail painting for Kids Kingdom. And for the record, I'm pretty sure the DMS guys were grateful that they didn't have to do this portion of the painting. And Kayla and I had a blast. This type of fun project mixes creativity with community outreach, which leads me to the second section of our responsibilities, community engagement opportunities. Last year, we awarded twenty five thousand dollars in sponsorships and donations to twenty-three different organizations like United Way, Beginnings Care for Life, the Interact Club with their ABC Challenge, Pansefia Academy, Tibbetts Summer Theater, Coldwater High School NHS, the Coldwater High School Athletic Boosters, City Fireworks, Rec Department things and more. And some of these organizations receive funding for more than one event. Our employees spent six hundred and seven paid and unpaid hours participating in seventy-four different events. From staffing the booth at the entertainment series to placing flags at the cemetery to reading in schools, attending Career Day presentations or presenting monster detectives to area third graders to leading fire station tours or participating in downtown cemetery earth day cleanups. To staffing booths and selfie stations at Strawberry Fest. Thank you, Mayor Kramer, for being such a good sport and allowing me to take this photograph of you. And Apple Fest, which also included crafts for kids. Clearly, we are getting involved in the community. Additionally, we had five mutual aid calls, which included the fire department providing tornado aid and the electric department providing storm and hurricane aid down south. We received nine awards this year, including Reliable Public Power, the Michigan Green Communities Award. And the Community Engagement Department received two awards for excellence in public power communications for both print and digital and web and social media from APPA. The department also coordinated several blood drives with the American Red Cross, and we collected a hundred and nineteen units of blood last year. This is also a good reminder that our next blood drive is coming up on January twenty eighth. Registration for appointments is currently available, so please feel free to sign up for that. I'm really most proud of how generous our employees are. This year, they personally raised and donated over ten thousand dollars to various causes like breast cancer awareness, Toys for Tots, the Food Pantry and various local organizations and efforts through payroll deduction with Branch County United Way. As you can see, we have been busy this year documenting and informing our community, getting involved and making an impact on our community and beyond. And on a personal note, I want to thank you for this opportunity the past ten months. I have very much enjoyed working here, getting to know the crews at the city and the BPU. And as a side note, I'll always say yes to going up in a bucket truck or busting out my paintbrushes for a special project. Thank you.
Good report, Stephanie. Questions? Very good, very good, very nice report.
Thank you.
No questions? Thank you very much. We have a last spot on our agenda for public comments. If anyone would like to address the council? Seeing none, any unfinished business at our level? Anybody got a new business at city council level?